...of the Planning Board to order, having a quorum sitting here. The meeting of the Howard's Planning Board of Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, is called order at six thirty-five. For anybody that's planning on taping the meeting, they have to video, either audio or video, they have to notify the chair. And for anybody that's interested, we are being taped and broadcast, I assume. So the, tonight, the agenda is somewhat crowded, but the first order of business, we're going to move the site plan review for the golf course forward to first on the agenda. So that is a waiver of site plan. PB two thousand seventeen dash twenty-nine, the town of Howard's Golf Course as owner and applicant, care of Chris Clark, Town Administrator, and Charlene, Assistant Town Administrator as representative, seek approval of a waiver of site plan review for the relocation of an existing fuel tank, demolition of two existing cart barns, and the construction of a new golf cart barn. The property is located at one eighty-three Oak Street, map sixty-one parcel H one, and is more commonly known as Cranbury Valley Golf Course in the R R and W R zoning district. The applicant pursuant to the code of Town of Howard's Section three twenty-five dash fifty-five F is set forth in Mass. General Law, Chapter forty A, Section nine. Charlene and Chris?
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that you only have the four members?
We only have the four members, but that is adequate for you. We only need four members.
Okay.
Four members constitutes a quorum. For one of the, for one of the agenda items, a little later on, we need five for a special, for accessory apartment, but for four members, you're lucky.
And for my, for the, for the request that's before the board this evening, you need to have unanimous vote?
Of four.
Yes, you would.
Yes, you would.
Okay. I think I would like to request a postponement to December twelfth.
Continuance.
Continuance to December twelfth, if, if you're okay with that.
Let's talk about this a little bit. Why the hell should we move it?
Hmm? One moment.
I mean, I suppose we can't come out ahead, but what do you think?
I think he's requesting a postponement. I mean...
Excuse me, just Chris, fair clarification. You're wanting a postponement just on the vote of a waiver?
Yes.
Okay, now, if we, let's just say a hypothetical, if we turn down the waiver tonight, then you could come back with site plan review on the twelfth. But if we wait till the twelfth and we turn down the waiver, then we traditionally do not have a meeting the week before Christmas, so you're gonna be into January before you could come back with site plan review.
So you're losing nothing, bud?
So, I mean, I think, since we're only talking about a waiver as opposed to the vote on, you know, in the discussion of the site plan, I, I mean, I would think it would be more logical to go ahead with that tonight, and then if that doesn't pass, you could come back on the twelfth, you know, for site plan review.
I, I do have a operational concern that we have bids due in on Thursday for the building, so I, I need to have, if, if the waiver doesn't get, you know, approved tonight...
Right.
Then I'm gonna really create quite a few issues for myself in terms of the timetables. So it, it's critical that, I think, that the full board be here so I can have a full hearing.
You, you could do that, but as a matter of interest, we're on a pretty reduced board right now.
Okay.
And I don't know that it's gonna be improved that much by then. So i- if, I tell you, if I had to make a recommendation, I'd say go ahead.
The worst thing that's gonna happen is you don't get four votes, and then you can still have your site plan review at the next meeting. Is there time to...
We won't have, we, we won't have a plan...
We won't have the plan complete by then.
Completed to the satisfaction of the full site plan requirements.
Okay, so then, if you come back to us on the twelfth of December and we turn you down, would you then have the site plan prepared for the first meeting in January?
Perhaps.
Perhaps, okay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I just have, have one question. Is this, I mean, could this be like a, there's four of us here, a three to one vote or something? And that, doesn't, it doesn't have to be unanimous?
It does have to be unanimous.
It does have to be.
Oh, it does have to be.
It has, it has to be.
You have to have enough to pass the full, if the full board was...
Based, based on, based on a seven-member board.
I got you. We would need four votes in order to approve the waiver.
It's just, if I go forward and I, and I don't get the unanimous, it's really gonna impact the project significantly, so, you know, I'm, I'm happy to kinda present, but I guess I need that as kind of an understanding upfront that I'm trying to find a way here to, to get a sense.
I, I would, I would say, I would go through the presentation, then if you don't feel comfortable till the end, or we don't feel comfortable, you can table it.
Then we'll tell you so.
Can I request a table, okay, a table inside the end?
I, I'd say, give us a quick presentation. We all, we've all read it, we all know about it.
What would tabling accomplish, however?
The same thing as postponing it, as continuing it.
But anybody who's not here can't sit on the next hearing?
If they read the minutes, they can.
If you get a new member by then, who's not a member this evening, they won't be eligible to vote on this.
But we're at a waiver, we're only at a public hearing, we're not at a, we're at a public meeting, we're not at a public hearing, right?
Yeah, it's just a public meeting.
So this is just the waiver, this isn't, this...
No, I, I realize that, but anyone who's not present, who is not a member already, would not then be eligible to vote at the next meeting.
But if it was a continuance, they would?
If we don't present anything.
If they read the minutes.
Okay.
So that, yeah.
Well, then, I'll make a motion that we continue this matter to the meeting of December twelfth.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Oh, well, before we, before we say, I have one question. Between now and December twelfth, if we have a new member or two, in fact, appointed, they'll be fully able to vote, am I correct?
Absolutely.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would ask for a post?
Any opposed?
Post!
Sorry for the confusion, Mr. Chairman. We were anticipating that we would have five members this evening, so...
I'll, I'll, I'll vote in the, I'll vote in the affirmative, three in favor, one against.
So we'll continue to the twelfth?
To continue. So it, we'll continue to the twelfth and put them first on the agenda.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Nice to see you.
Thank you, Roman, we appreciate that.
Nice to be seen.
I'm not raising it, but it's enough to pass.
Okay.
It's enough to table.
The next item on the agenda...
I know.
Yeah.
Is PB two thousand seventeen dash twenty-five, David Varzley, Haring Realty Trust as owner, and Tim Brady, Professional Engineer and Public Land Surveyor, as representatives, seek approval of a rescission plan pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one W. The proposal seeks to rescind the recorded subdivision plan from Winslow Brulman's Plan Book two fifty, page twenty-seven, being lots one, two, three, parcel A, and the way. In favor of a two-lot, approval not required, A and R division plan. The property is known as Sacqueteca Drive, map fifteen, in the RL zoning district. You're still alive.
Good evening, everyone.
You did the original plan, didn't you?
Not in nineteen seventy-one.
Oh, I'm wondering. Okay.
I'm Tim Brady from East Cape Engineering, and I'm here with Attorney Paul Revere, and I don't know whether you're familiar with this property or not. This is a little bit of an unusual piece of property. Does everybody know where this is?
If anybody's had supper at Brax, I'm sure they have.
Correct. So as it is today, the access to this parcel is over a right-of-way on the Brax Landing property. It crosses over Carding Brook Creek, and it comes to this parcel that's shown on this plan as, as lots one and two. There was a subdivision plan done for that in nineteen seventy-one, which showed access through that, through that right-of-way, crossing over the creek and going to that Sacqueteca Drive, and that showed three lots at the time. There was approval to construct a culvert in the creek at that point in time, that never happened. We have attempted to build a bridge across that creek to get to this property, that's not gonna work out. So we are now working with the neighbors to purchase a property that's shown on here as lot three, which will provide frontage and access for this large piece of property. So there's two things that are going on here tonight. The first one is to rescind the old subdivision, just to get rid of all of those old lines. Sacqueteca Drive as a right-of-way will go away, and the three lot lines will also go away. So it's just at that point in time, one piece of property. Then we're also here to do an A and R plan, which cuts off one piece of the existing property that will go to Sandra Tanco's property, shown on this plan as lot four, and to combine a presently vacant lot, lot three, to, with, with our existing parcel, where we're eliminating the, the existing subdivision. There's a lot going on here in terms of wetlands regulations, there's coastal banks, there's flood zones, there's the creek itself, but I, we've put together a plan that I believe meets all of the zoning requirements for buildable lots. We've shown, once all of this is completed, total lot area of ninety-seven thousand square feet approximately, an upland lot area of greater than forty-six thousand square feet. It has a shake factor of twenty-one point seven, and it has frontage of two hundred and ten, so those all meet your zoning requirements for a, for a lot. I think that's a general description, I would try and answer any questions if I can.
Good. Ellie, good luck.
So I think, as Mr. Brady stated, you have to kind of consider both applications. So the first one you would consider is the rescission plan. So do you feel that, as a board, you agree to rescind the original subdivision plan from nineteen, nineteen seventy-one? And then the second part of the application is the A and R plan. After I wrote the staff report, I did, Elaine actually had discussions with the applicant regarding potential changing of that lot line, so I'm not sure where you are with that.
That's a, that's an excellent point. I do have plans that I can show you. We are proposing one revision to the A and R portion of the project. It's a pretty minor revision.
So this will be the second part of the application, so after the rescission, then you should decide on the A and R merit.
The lot line between lots one and two comes across at a little bit more than any go like this. So if you look on that...
Yeah?
Yeah, it's about like this. Pardon my shaking hand. That line on your plan is about like that, and we've revised it up to there.
Sorry.
It's a line on your plan that I submitted, comes about like this. So that was just a minor... I would mention also, no construction has ever taken place on this subdivision. It's still all presently owned by just one group. There, there are not, no lots have ever been sold out of that subdivision.
Which subdivision?
The, the one that we're rescinding, the Sacqueteca.
Original.
The original. And you can see it, this was the, this was the road that we're eliminating.
This was the original one.
Yeah, that's the original.
So that's the road.
And this is Sandy Grace's house?
That's Sandra Tanco, yeah. And then she also owns this vacant lot. This lot is becoming part of this lot, and this lot is becoming part of that lot. These are the lines from this old subdivision plan that are being eliminated.
And tell me what, what you end up with?
So what we end up with for our building lot is, is this piece right here. See that? This was the original subdivision.
And where's the restaurant again?
Restaurant's right here. Route six is here, when you're in the restaurant parking lot, this is all off to the right. You go down a little bit further, up Colonial Way.
It's all wooded, correct?
It's all wooded.
As I recall?
Yeah, it's nicely wooded now. Yeah, this has never been...
So you'll end up with one buildable lot?
Correct. Correct. She gets a little bigger lot, and we get one buildable lot. We actually, this is a buildable lot today on its own. It, it has frontage in area that was required at the time of that subdivision. In effect, we're making that a larger lot, but we still end up with just one...
I call her, sorry, 'cause I sometimes find it hard. So this is the lot that they're...
Excellent, thanks.
Yeah, no problem. So this one goes with this, so the pink goes with this lot here, and the green goes with this here.
How big is this lot when you're done?
On the, on the new revision, the final, final plan, the total lot, the total lot area is ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and forty-three.
Thanks, Ellie.
That's including wetlands and, and coastal bank.
Down here, right?
Exactly, yeah. And the, and the upland portion, which is required to be forty, is forty-six thousand.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the only other concern that was also brought to my attention was that after the rescission, if the board agrees to approve the rescission, you have twenty-one days appeal, the applicants have twenty-one day appeal period before it's completed, and they need to go to the town clerk, and, just like any regular subdivision. So technically, the rescission wouldn't be finished, finished, until those twenty-one days are over. So it's really up to the board if then they'd want to approve the A and R currently, or if you'd request the applicant to withdraw and then reapply, potentially with no fees, you know, waiver of the fees, because they've already been paid.
Go ahead.
Could we, to Ellie's point, could we simply postpone our vote on the A and R until the timeframe expires, or would we, would it, does it require new advertising?
So, no, it doesn't, because it's not a hearing, it's just the meeting. The A and Rs don't require hearings, but we would need written approval from the applicants, and then the board obviously would have to agree as well, and we just need to kind of sign off on that to continue it.
Okay, I have a question with regard to the, the subdivision that is being requested to be rescinded. According to the plan that I see, it appears as if lot three is owned by a separate entity?
Yeah, I, I can answer that.
Yes, okay, please.
Paul Revere, lot three is not part of the subdivision. See, this historically came out of, I'll say, essentially a mistake of the land court in nineteen thirty-five. If you look at lot three and lot four, like this long rectangle, okay, that is a land court property that was confirmed by the land court in nineteen thirty-five.
Okay.
What happened was, they're actually all come out of the same chain of title, this and Colonial Way to the West, but, so that is registered land, that rectangle, and this is why my client's property, the property to the east that is on Sacqueteca Harbor, is unregistered land, and back in the nineteen sixties, got this easement across Brax Landing to get to it, because it didn't have a legal right to get to it across the land court property. So three and four, which are controlled by Ms. Tanco, who is here, are registered land, and were not part of the subdivision, they're actually part of an offshoot of the Colonial Way subdivision, which you can see on the left side of the plan.
Okay, so then, the only thing that's part of the subdivision is lots one and two?
No, let's, there's two...
Do you have the historical plan?
Show them the historical plan.
Which lot three, when you say lot three on the subdivision...
Are you talking original or the new?
Tell me that. This lot three, this lot three is, never was part of the original subdivision plan. See that lot three?
Okay.
This line right here, this long straight line, is this long straight line.
Okay.
And then at a later point in time, this, this road came in here like this, this became lot three over here, and this is lot four over here, okay? So this, this piece right here, lot three, that's a currently existing vacant, separate lot, that is not part of the original subdivision. So we're, we're expunging all of this subdivision and adding to it that lot that's beside it.
Is that registered, is that land courted?
That's registered, yeah, that's right.
So you're gonna have unregistered land and registered land in one new parcel that would be unregistered?
So, again, the, is, am I correct, or am I reading this wrong, that the subdivision that you're requesting to rescind is on land that's labeled here, it's lots two and lots one?
That's correct.
Okay, that, that was what my question was.
Yes, and, yes, it is.
May I ask you a question? You are, you are newly created lot two, okay? Does the lot line go up here, or does it go all around here?
Goes around.
So you end up owning this two even though it has Tanco's name on it?
That's correct. There's a note, there's a note, I believe there's a note right here that says, lot three, land court plan, something to become, to be combined with lot two shown here on. So that's, that's obviously, some deeds will need to be exchanged.
That's not part of the rescission that you're requesting.
That's not part of the rescission.
Okay, so let's keep that separate from the rescission.
Yeah.
Okay.
This, this is the rescission.
Okay.
This is the rescission. Once that's done, the A and R plan is, combines these two, and cuts this piece off to be debated.
Okay, okay. Now I think I understand.
So, Mr.?
Thank you.
When, when we're, when we're done, Ms. Tanco owns this one, this one, and this one?
No, when we're done...
This and this.
She will own this and this, and we will own this.
Oh, okay, she's gonna trade that to you guys, okay.
Okay, but that's part of the A and R, not the rescission.
That's correct.
Okay, because I think for our discussion, we need to keep those two things separate.
That's fine, yeah, that's, one step at a time.
What happens if we didn't rescind it?
I don't know. My guess is, an argument could be made that, that all of these lines would have to be respected as...
Guys, let's stick with this meeting.
I would think that if it was not rescinded, these would, these, where's the little plan? This subdivision would still be in effect, those property lines would still be there, that street line would still be there. Anybody that, that wanted to try and build anything would have to respect those lines for setbacks, I think, I don't know. There's no reason for the board not to rescind. It's in your, it's in your interest, I think, to rescind.
Why couldn't you put the bridge over that little river?
Conservation Commission and our, and our client couldn't come to an agreement.
Yeah, let, let me address that, we're actually haven't...
It's, it's, yeah, it's not abandoned yet.
We, the Conservation Commission disapproved the matter under both the local bylaw and the Wetlands Protection Act.
Disapproved what?
Disapproved a bridge across that river.
A bridge over troubled waters?
Yes, over Carding Machine Brook. Disapproved that. The decision under the Wetlands Protection Act was reversed by DEP. The decision under the local wetlands bylaw was upheld by the Barnstable Superior Court, and that decision was upheld by the Massachusetts Court of Appeals. As part of that lawsuit, my clients have currently pending a takings claim against the town of Harwich, saying, look, the state would approve this, the conservation local bylaw wouldn't, and therefore you've taken our property. They asked us, and we're, in method of resolving that lawsuit, said, can you get alternative access? And we ultimately worked out an agreement that would get rid of alternative access. So essentially, this is a settlement plan, is to get rid of that lawsuit and to result with one house on multiple lots in that area.
So, Counselor, if this is a settlement plan, the lawsuit goes away if we rescind one subdivision and approve an A and R?
Um...
We can't approve an A and R unless we rescind it.
Endorse, yeah, yeah.
Correct. With the, the lawsuit essentially goes away, it becomes a temporary taking, which is not a claim that anybody's going to pursue, and we have said that, there's, there's no written agreement, but there's no, nobody wants to pursue it at that point.
Nobody ride that horse if you're having fun.
I get it all the time. But yeah, that, it's part of a, a global issue of dealing with us.
Okay.
Does this lady have something she wanted to say to us?
I'm just...
Can you tell us who you are, please?
Oh, yes, I'm Mary McCall. I live at twenty-five Colonial Way, and I am trying to understand, which this gentleman was kind enough to point out some things, I'm trying to understand how it would impact my property.
And show us where your property, show us where your property is?
We are right here.
Says McCall on the plan.
McCall McCallum.
Oh, I see it.
Yeah.
Okay. Zero. Well...
And whoever else's property may be on the street.
Murphy. Yeah. Okay. This is a public hearing, so, okay. Any other questions for the board? Any questions for the public? Feel free, stand up, and if you have a question, ask us. Right up to the mic.
Just it again?
Don't feel bashful, right up to the microphone.
I'll work the mic.
Because you're on television. Thank you.
I'm here to ask what impact that this new home would have on my property and the surrounding properties, or the property of that street. It's a, it's a dead end, cul-de-sac, whatever you want to refer to it as, and not really being privy to the ins and outs of planning boards and so forth. You're going to have to keep it to elementary terms, for me, and explain just what basically is going to happen.
Ellie?
Sure, so I'll try to take a stab at it. So basically, what's gonna happen is, there was an existing three-lot subdivision that was approved in nineteen seventy-one.
Yes, I, I understand that much, uh-huh.
And so what they wanna do is, technically, they, it seems, because it's in litigation and, you know...
Right, they have to have another way to get there.
Right, and it, yeah, so this is the path that they're choosing, is to rescind it, and then potentially do an approval not required plan...
Mm-hmm.
Which the planning board has to endorse, and what they're proposing is to merge...
I know, I'm a visual learner, so you're going to have to actually...
Yeah, let me get a pointer, and I think that might be more helpful.
That would be great.
So you can see, and I'm a little blind, so you're gonna have to bear with me. So this was the entire existing property that had the three-lot subdivision, not this part, I'm sorry, there's a line here, so it's this part here that had the existing subdivision. There's two existing lots, this lot and this lot here, and they have access via this road that's existing. What they're proposing to do is remove the three lots that were on this piece here, so to rescind that, to make this one large lot and merge it with this existing lot here. So now it would be one large lot, and the same thing with this. They're proposing to merge this lot that they've, that they'll, they're hoping to create with this piece here. So this house will stay the same, and this lot will stay the same except get larger, so not stay, it will get larger, it will add all of this area here. I'm not sure, because of setbacks and wetlands, if they'll be able to expand this footprint of the house or not. It really depends on the setbacks to the wetlands, but they'll still be able, potentially, it seems, to use this road. This, they could pretend... This, they could potentially, and again, I don't know because I don't have a plan in front of me, but there's setbacks to the wetlands, so I'm not sure if they'll be able to build a house here. They'd have to prove, you know, that they meet all of the code of our town to allow that to happen. But if that's the case, then they could potentially build a home here, and they would have, this lot would be this entire parcel with one house, potentially.
How do you wanna refer to it?
Yeah, so that's.
It's labeled on the plan. Top of, top of bank.
Top of bank. Yeah, so.
Top of the bank.
Top of the bank, okay, so this is the top of the bank.
Yes, and this is where the wetlands are.
Does that expl, does that explain it? Does that explain it for you?
What do you mean, a plan?
Has that explained it?
Oh, does it explain it? Do you, um, Rex Landing, the, um, the, um, restaurant. That's down here.
No, it's up, it's up further up to your right, way up.
Up there.
Yeah, I wonder if you can see it.
Up in there. Yep.
So this would be here?
Up further.
Right there, right there.
Right there.
That's Rex Landing.
Okay.
So it potentially could have, you know, add a house here. But, you know, we can't say that for sure unless it goes through the building permit process and conservation, potentially, so.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? There are no further questions?
To the applicants, I assume you'll comply with what the police department's talking about.
Thank you.
The latest thing.
Oh, the, the police department comment was it's dealing with access.
Entering and exit from.
Okay, but Joe, we're just talking about the rescission and how not the A and R.
Yeah, but in terms of the, the police department, the police department was talking about access on Route twenty-eight, and we come out.
But that's.
The offshoot.
But that's not an issue with regards to the A and R.
Deals with another part.
Right. Yeah, there is no issue.
Okay. Any other questions? Having heard that? Do I hear a motion?
Moved to approve the rescission of the Winslow C. Rollamans' plan, as recorded in Plan Book two fifty, page twenty-seven, approved by the Howard's Planning Board on August third, nineteen seventy-one, and shown on the plan entitled, quote, "Plan of Land State Highway Route twenty-eight, Howard's, Mass., as prepared by Timothy J. Brady, Land Surveyor, dated September twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen."
Can I make one comment?
No, we have a motion on the floor, and I'm going to second that motion.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
None, for me.
Can you make a comment?
Yes, you can make one now before we vote, yeah.
The, if you're going to consider the revised plan that I brought tonight, we should use a different date than the September twenty-first, twenty-seventeen plan.
So they have just submitted to us now, revised.
What's the date on it?
November seventh, twenty-seventeen.
Okay, but is that relevant with regard to the rescission?
I think it, I think it makes sense just to refer to one plan, yes.
But that's, that's not relevant due to the rescission. We're trying to deal with the rescission first.
I understand that.
We're only dealing with the rescission.
We're only dealing with the rescission right now.
I understand that. I understand that. I think it's, I think it will be similar in the long run.
Okay, and I disagree with you.
Okay.
Okay. I think we're confusing, we're confusing the issues between the rescission and the A and R.
You're gonna end up with two plans. When we're done, if we, if we proceed this way, you're gonna end up signing one plan that's dated September twenty-first with some information on it that's helpful. And you're gonna end up signing a second plan with a different date on it that deals with the A and R.
Okay, why are we signing a plan on a rescission of a subdivision that was done in nineteen seventy?
Because it's required. It's required.
Okay, then what we need to sign is we need to sign the plan from nineteen seventy-one as being rescinded.
I believe that you sign according to this, there's a, there's a statement on here that says, approval is required under MGL Part One Title Seven, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one W, to rescind the subdivision plan. That's what's on the plan that I submitted, that hopefully we're headed for some.
But that's not the subdivision plan that was, that was approved in nineteen seventy-one.
No, that plan's been recorded and it's long gone.
Then I'm getting completely confused. I'm sorry.
It seems to me, and I'm not the lawyer, but it seems to me that we have to rescind the plan that was approved.
And that was approved in seventy-one.
We're doing that. The plan that was approved in seventy-one, that plan has been recorded at the Registry of Deeds in nineteen seventy-one.
Right.
We don't have access to that plan any longer.
Why not?
Why not?
It's gone, it's recorded at the Registry of Deeds.
So you can get a copy from the registry.
We get a copy, yeah, you have a copy right here. You have a copy right here, this is where it's recorded.
If I may, I think, I think the confusion is only that any subsequent A and R plan, even though we're not voting on an A and R plan, the vote tonight, in the, in the motion, we refer to a plan that was given us that shows the old subdivision.
Shows a rescission of the old subdivision.
And the problem is, the vote is going to refer to a September plan when they've now submitted a November plan. And I think that's all he's trying to clear up, is this, this language that's on the top. I understand your point that it's not, this isn't the plan that's being rescinded, correct? But it has a recitation in it.
This is the process for rescinding that plan. We can't rescind that plan, it's gone. We could have a copy of it, that's fine, that doesn't rescind the plan. The process to rescind the plan is to, is to have this statement on here. The planning board decides to rescind it, twenty-one days from now, the town clerk indicates whether anybody took an appeal to that or not.
Okay, Ally, I'm completely confused, and I think we need an outside opinion on this before we proceed. Because I'm completely confused.
So you're saying, I just wanna make sure I understand.
Yeah, okay.
So you're saying that you believe that we should sign the plan that has been fi, a copy of the plan that has been filed with the Registry of Deeds and have a section that has the rescission on it of the planning board? So you'd still have this clause here on that, a copy of that old plan that shows the three lots, is that what you're saying?
That's what we're rescinding.
I'm, I'm assuming that the old plan gets rescinded, the slate is clean.
Right.
And you just come in with a brand-new A and R and registered A and R.
We could, we could do that.
Yeah, and I mean, I think, I think that's what would sort of clarify the confusion that I have.
Yeah, okay, now, just to point out, if you sign a plan, if you sign a copy of a plan that we get at the registry and you put the rescission note on that, you can't record that at the registry, they won't take it. They only take Mylar plans. So the process for rescinding a plan is just what we're going through here. Now, it is possible, I could, if that's what you need, take the A and R information off of this plan, present you two separate plans, one that shows a rescission of the subdivision, and then one that shows an A and R plan. They would be two separate plans with individual information on it.
But your rescission of the subdivision plan would show the three lots?
Right.
And saying it's resc.
It would look, it would simply not have this information on it. It would be a plan that would show.
Well, I think what Ally's saying would have the three lots under the original subdivision.
Yes, it would.
Okay.
This plan now has that on it.
Right, that's what I was looking to see, if the plan, just to confirm if the plan has it on it.
This plan now includes everything, Sutucket Way, this line right here, this line right, this line right here. Those are the lines of this old subdivision, not this one, this one.
So it is shown on the plan, it's just, it also shows the A and R as well.
Okay, then.
Here's, here's Sutucket Road right here, just as shown on this plan.
Okay.
This lot line right here is this line right here.
Okay, but with lot one indication here.
That's not on there.
Okay, and that's.
If you have to have that, I mean, you guys get to sign, so I give every lot.
I, I mean, I think that would clarify my confusion, because then it would make it clear we were rescinding what was approved in nineteen seventy-one.
I think that.
Do you need a note that says, lot one, nineteen seventy-two plan, lot two, nineteen seventy-two plan?
That was the intention of this, this note comes from the, the Massachusetts laws on how to rescind the subdivision. This note came directly from there. And even though it doesn't list lot one, lot two, lot three, it does list that we're gonna, that we're gonna rescind the plan recorded at the Registry of Deeds in Plan Book two fifty, page twenty-seven.
Okay, but that's on a plan that is completely different from that plan that was recorded.
That, yes, you're never gonna see the plan that was recorded in nineteen seventy-one, other than a copy, just like this one.
Mm-hmm.
That's the way you're ever gonna see that plan.
Okay, but I thought you just said that you could develop a, a plan that showed those lots.
I can.
As approved.
I can.
So that we could see that. It may not be the actual plan that was recorded, but it will be exactly the same as the plan.
It will be the same as that subdivision. Which, all I'm saying is, that same information is already on this plan.
Okay, and that's where I completely lose you. I'm sorry, but I completely lose you at that point.
Okay, so you're saying that you'd like to see two separate plans, one with a.
Can we just rescind a plan by, can we rescind the subdivision by vote? And have a vote of the planning board recorded? And then, then subsequently note the vote of the rescission on any subsequent A and R plan? Because essentially, if we're not voting them at the same time, you're gonna have a gap in time between your, your subdivision rescission and any subs, anything else that happens on that, on those parcels. So I'm wondering if you could do it by, by a vote, vote recorded, have the vote cross-reference to both the plan and the original subdivision approval, and then subsequently note the vote and catch it all on your marginal references, on your new pla, on the A and R plan if and when it gets recorded.
At this point, I would just assume do two separate plans, and I would have the planning board sign them at the same time, so there wouldn't be any particular gap in between the plans. If we were gonna, if we were gonna do it just by vote, then it'd have to be some other document that had to be prepared and.
No, I, I, I think that would certainly clarify my confusion, and so I would, I appreciate your willingness to do that.
Yeah, like I say, you guys get to vote, so whatever.
Yeah, no, I appreciate your willingness to do that, because I just wanna make it crystal clear, you know, that we're rescinding the old one, and then as a later action, you know, whenever, it could be an hour later or whatever.
I'm just gonna say, yeah, hopefully a few minutes.
We're, we're approving the A and R.
Councilor?
Well, I think we're also, and I think Mary was getting to some of these issues specifically, conflating two issues. One is the actual vote to rescind the plan, and then the actual, what needs to be done to make it effective. Okay, and Tim presented it in a single document, which I think is what's bothering Mr. Atkinson. And so I, I, from the standpoint, I was just reading Chapter forty-one, eighty-one W, there are two things that came to my mind. The first thing was, is what Mary was, Ms. Slavsky was getting to, and that's the vote versus the actual mechanics of doing it. The secondary thing is, no matter how much we wanna speculate on ways to do it, there's one person who's gonna answer that question, Jack Mead, the Registrar of Deeds. So when I look at it from your standpoint, if it's a plan, it has to be, quote, endorsed by the board. So nothing is ever gonna be recorded, even if you vote a waiver on a plan, until a plan is put in front of you to sign to, to affect that. And I would not have my client give you any plan to sign unless Jack Mead said, this is the way I want it put together. So when I look at this before you, and I, I would suggest that you vote to rescind the plan and to endorse a, a plan consistent with the requirements of what the Registry of Deeds wants submitted to them.
Having said that, you've probably been working on this on and off for a good many years. Why not do two plans, make it simple, one rescinds, re-register another one, and you're over and done with it?
Um, because, because Jack Mead might not accept it. And that's all, that was the only reason.
Why not go see him and ask him?
Then I might, I might suggest that we continue this until you get that information and can bring that information back to the board.
Yeah, that's fine.
Where, I think we have a motion on the.
There's a motion on the floor.
Yeah.
There is a motion on the floor.
To approve and seconded. I withdraw the second.
Oh, you made the motion.
I withdraw the motion.
And I withdraw the second.
Having said that, we're right back to square one.
Move to continue to December twelfth?
December twelfth. Can you get back and forth and see the registrar by then?
Okay, just, I just wanted to clarify, December twelfth, is that what you said? Okay, and then the other part.
Two thousand seventeen.
Two thousand seventeen. And then the other part is for the A and R, so I assume that you would want to withdraw the A and R without prejudice currently, with the condition.
You don't have to, it doesn't make any difference, because that's not rescinded. There's no A and R. You can't do an A and R on top of a subdivision plan, right?
Well, that gets a little messy. You could, the, the planning board's required to file an A and R within a certain number of days. If they don't, then it gets automatically recorded, and all that does is screw up our titles. So that's not something that we wanna do. But I wouldn't say it's something that couldn't be done. So I would think either continue the A and R until the next meeting, which we'd be happy to do.
Okay.
Yeah, why don't we make it very specific? We would agree to continue the necessity of the board to act on our A and R plan until its next regularly scheduled meeting.
December twelfth.
December twelfth.
Well, no, notice I use next regularly scheduled meeting, in case for some reason it gets canceled.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's the reason I use that terminology, so we don't have to figure out what to do if it snows on December twelfth.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, that raises the issue of the appeal period.
Right.
That we had discussed earlier. And it's my opinion that, you know, I don't feel comfortable acting on the A and R until we both acted on the rescission and gone through the appeal period. So I think Ally's comment about withdrawing the A and R without prejudice is probably the way I would rather see it go at this point, and then.
Refile with a waiver.
You refile, you know, and we hear it after, you know, assuming we vote the rescission and, you know, sign the plan or whatever, at the meeting in December twelfth, then you can reapply for the A and R for the meeting that's at least twenty-one days after, you know, that rescission is voted. And I think Ally had suggested that we would also waive the fee for the refiling.
Yeah, we would.
Yeah.
Any trouble with that?
Ten years, Councilor, what's another twenty-one days?
Do you have butters, do you have a problem with that? Okay.
Yeah, so they, so they need.
Ms. Tango, we have a deal with Ms. Tango, and I don't wanna be suggesting a further extension without at least.
Right, so I mean, then you're, you're probably looking at, you know, the A and R at our first meeting in January.
That's what it sounds like.
Are we all set?
Do we need a motion to continue?
Motion to continue.
Second.
To the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Yes.
Been moved and seconded by Mr. McParland and Mr. Atkinson. Any discussion?
And then the waiver.
Huh?
And then the.
Well, let's do that, let's do this first.
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Now, what do you mean?
The A and R, the withdrawal without prejudice.
Yes. Move to allow withdrawal of the A and R without prejudice.
Second. Moved and seconded.
And to grant a waiver of fees on any resubmital?
Pardon me?
And to grant a waiver of fees on any resubmital?
I accept your. I accept your amendment.
Okay.
And I second that the amendment.
It's been moved and seconded, the amended motion and the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you. I was just gonna say, have a good Thanksgiving.
Have we ever rescinded one? Have you ever rescinded a subdivision before?
I don't think so.
Thank God there were no owners.
Okay.
Tanco wasn't in the room.
I have to ask you one more question.
That's her behind, Paul.
Changed her hair.
Yes. Okay. The next item on the agenda, or are we here?
I need to call.
Oh, good. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for October twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen.
Wait, Larry, we have to do Halliday, the.
Oh, wait a minute.
Accessory apartment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, but there are only four of us.
Mr. Halliday.
There are only four of us.
That's okay, for this one.
This is the accessory apartment.
Calling in. Have you ever rescinded a subdivision?
Even if I had, I wouldn't admit to it.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, I've got one right here.
Yes, of course, if you can find it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, you're on speaker, Ellen. Okay. Let the minutes reflect that Ellen Peterson is on call and speaker, making the fifth member of the Board. Kids, if you wanna continue that, would you go outside?
Go outside.
Thank you. This is PB two thousand seventeen dash twenty-seven, John Halliday as owner. Mr. Kroll is legal representative, seek approval of a U special permit for an accessory apartment with waivers pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section Three Twenty-Five Dash Fifty-One H and Article Five as set forth in Mass. General Law Forty-Eight, Section Nine. The proposal locates one-bedroom apartment within the dwelling unit at basement level. The property is located at Seventeen Long Pond Drive, MAP ninety-two, parcel R two A dash four in the RL zoning district. Mr. Kroll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Attorney William Kroll, representing John Halliday, seated here with me this evening to my right. My thanks to Ally Sabatino for making sure we had a quorum tonight. My thanks to Mr. Atkinson, who's on, on the telephone, and to the Board for, for making this possible tonight. You would've missed the last hour of attempting to rescind a, A and R plan.
Very rewarding discussion.
Mr. Halliday resides at Seventeen Long Pond Drive, and is requesting a special permit from this Board for an attached residential accessory apartment to his, his existing single-family residential dwelling. It's allowed by the, the bylaw, and the accessory apartment will be wholly located within the basement of the existing dwelling, so there'd be no change to the footprint of the dwelling. Mr. Halliday, by the way, has resided in town for forty-five years, and has been a good citizen of the town and, and former chairman of the Golf Commission.
Dubious honor of passage.
I was gonna say the same.
Back when it was a commission.
The floor layout of the existing dwelling and the proposed basement accessory apartment are shown on the plans that were previously filed with the application for his building permit. The accessory apartment will have one bedroom. The net floor area will be eight hundred and forty-two square feet, which is less than this nine hundred square foot maximum, and less than fifty percent of the net square footage of the principal dwelling. It will have one off-street parking area for the accessory dwelling unit, and there will be no change in site coverage or building coverage, because he's not changing the footprint of the dwelling. So he's asking that the Board grant the special permit this evening and find that the proposed special permit will, and, and use as an accessory apartment will not adversely affect the neighborhood. It's a, it, it's a site that's appropriate for this use, and that there will be no nuisance or serious hazard, hazard to pedestrians or vehicles. Inadequate and appropriate facilities are provided, provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. We'd ask that you grant the special permit this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ally.
Okay, so there's just a few things that I wanted to point out on page two of your staff report. So under the comments from other Boards, Departments, and Committees, the Health Department had originally stated inspection of the existing leach pits is required. I subsequently have spoken with them, and that has, that has already been done, so they have no concerns regarding this application. That is also, just to point out, I added that as the condition. If the Board votes to approve this application, it's number three, so we should remove that condition as well, because it has been met already.
Which, which, which?
Number three.
Here? Oh, down here.
Yeah, down there.
I see it, thank you.
No problem. Under my planning staff comments, all the administrative filing requirements have been met, and I do recommend approval of this application. And then there's just one more thing that I wanted to point out, under the findings of facts, number three, says it's the owner's intent to occupy both units. It really should just state one unit. Sorry, that's a typo. And those are all of my comments.
Good, any comments?
Yeah, and actually, this is mainly a request for clarification. I'm looking at the plan that was submitted, and I see what appears to be three different levels. I'm a little bit confused as to where the apartment is and what is part of the original house.
The middle level is the basement apartment.
Okay, so it's the upper level, the first floor, the.
This is, this is the second floor here.
That's, the lower is the second floor of the house.
Yes.
And the top line is the main floor of the house?
Yes.
Okay, that, that clarifies it. The only other question I have is, I don't see on this plan, it says there's going to be one additional parking spot, I don't see where that's going to be located.
We, we have another very well-drafted.
Obviously, you did it.
Very specific, very specific handout that I asked Mr. Halliday to draw up a month ago.
So you, so the parking spot is gonna be just adjacent to the garage?
Adjacent to the garage.
Okay.
I need every member to see this, because it's.
Oh, critical.
For the record.
Okay. Okay, that answers my question.
Can we get the legal stamp on the bottom of this one?
I'll be glad to sign it.
Are there any other questions?
But I told Mr. Halliday you'd ask for that, Mr. Atkinson, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Joe. Why the need for an additional apartment?
Actually, at this point in time, I have a son who's fallen on some tough times, and he will, he will probably be living there for the time being.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions? Joe?
Okay, move to adopt the following waiver. Applicant seeks waivers in on modifications from commercial and residential requirements of the rules and regulations, as the requirements for submittal are not pertinent to a residential structure, that is, light landscape plans and so forth.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ellen, you vote? You did. All in favor? That's unanimous, five.
Okay, next, move to adopt the following findings of fact. One, the parcel is in the R dash L zoning section. Two, the apartment unit is not greater than nine hundred square feet, being eight hundred and forty-two plus or minus square feet. Three, it is the owner's intent to occupy one unit. Four, the minimum requirements have been met for setbacks, area, and bulk. Five, the driveway will provide sufficient off-street parking, which meets the minimum requirements. Six, the application is submitted, as submitted, does not adversely affect local traffic or create traffic hazards.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous, five, five votes. Thank you very much, gentlemen, thanks for coming up.
No, no, not done. Move to approve with conditions, the U special permit and waivers. Pursuant to four hundred dash six waiver of rules and regulations, requested for the attached accessory apartment, based on the fact the applicant, application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, with the above findings and following conditions. One, the owner shall maintain, occupy in one of the units as required by Town Code. Two, at least one off-street parking space shall be provided for the accessory dwelling unit. Three, the special permit decision shall be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. And four, any changes to the plan shall be, shall be subject to further planning board review.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, thank you, that's correct this time. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thanks.
Take the rest of the night off, Ellen.
Good luck.
Bye, Ellen.
Thank you again, Ally, appreciate it. Mr. Halliday did come, come all the way from Florida just for this hearing, and that's why I asked Ally to try to get a quorum if at all possible, so we really do appreciate it.
Clear one.
A lot more down there.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is.
Did we shut him up?
Yes, we did.
At the press, oh, but.
The minutes for October twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen.
Move to adopt.
Okay, it's been moved. Any seconders?
Seconds.
Seconded by Mary. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining. It is carried. Three to one, the next item on the agenda. The sale of recreational marijuana draft bylaw. Ally?
Do you wanna go through that? Okay, so we'll just keep the planning board's schedule to the end.
Okay, Ally, I had a question on the planning board's schedule, and it's a question that may have no answer at all. But anyway, I'll ask it, because it's been sort of confusing me for the past four years that I've been on the planning board. Why do we distinguish between public hearings and public meetings on different dates? Why don't we just have our meeting dates twice a month, and when we have a need for a public hearing, we schedule a public hearing on one of those dates? Why is there this distinction of only having public hearings on certain dates and not other dates?
That's a great question. I don't know. In my last job, we would always have the public meetings and public hearings on the same night, and we'd have the public meetings before, and if, if you needed to have a hearing, it would be after it, so.
That's essentially what you're saying.
That's essentially what I'm saying, is I would rather go to that type of system, you know, than having this distinction, because sometimes I think this distinction, you know.
It's confusing.
It, it gets to be confusing, and it can run us into time deadlines, you know, if we're not allowing public hearings except for one meeting a month. So I would rather just change this, you know, the same meeting dates as is here, but just that we would have public hearings as required on any of the meeting dates.
Yeah, I think you would just have to change the, your deadline.
Just the format.
You'd have to change your deadline dates, because they're, they're different, that's all.
So the deadline date, I think maybe the reason that we would, that we distinguish the hearing date, that you know it's a hearing.
Yeah.
Is because we do have those filing deadlines in order to notice and things like that. So I could see if we could rework it, but I would have to confirm, so you'd still wanna start at the same time, at six thirty.
Oh, yeah, no, exactly, yeah.
It would just be all in one.
Right.
One.
I think you could have two deadline dates. You could have a deadline date for, for non-public hearings, you could have a deadline for subdivisions, and you could have a deadline for, say, the A and Rs and the.
Yeah, yeah.
And the regular stuff.
That would be fine.
Just so that, you know, and I think as long as you distinguish that, you know, for a public hearing, you still need the, the two weeks and the advertisement, and you need to get, it needs to get in by X date, but that's something that comes in later, could still make the.
Yeah.
I think that's essentially what happens now anyway, in the long run, but.
Yeah, so you'd still have the public, let me just work it through in my head, you'd still have the public meeting dates and I guess the public hearing dates.
You'd actually add public hearing dates.
Yeah.
It'd just be the same.
Because you could have a public hearing on any night that we were meeting, as long as you met the deadline.
Which we do, yeah, we do anyway.
Yeah.
I think tonight, we weren't really supposed to have.
Right.
Hearings, but we did.
So, if you could just take a look at this calendar and maybe rework it that way for, and bring it to our next meeting.
Sure, is, did anyone have a chance to look at the dates, though? Are the, just think about if they're acceptable or not, or, you know, you need.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any problem with them.
Anybody birthdays on this?
Nobody ever asked us before.
You know, we're set, literally, we have to have our meetings on, they're scheduled on two, second and fourth Tuesday, except during elections or.
Yeah, I agree with Jim, I think you just, just make it one list, and, and you can do whatever, whatever you can meet the deadline for.
Yeah.
On your submission date, you can, you make it for the next meeting that, that you hit a deadline.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, okay, well, we, we'll rework it and come back.
Thank you.
That was my only kind of a job back.
Okay, yeah.
So we're moving right on to marijuana.
Yeah, we're on marijuana, okay.
So you've given us the outline for zoning bylaw amendments, too.
Yep, so, yeah, so. So just because we had some questions about it last time, I brought this that I found in the planning board's files. It's just kind of the outline of what goes on to get to town meeting with your bylaw. So this is really just what it is. So the next step for us is, once we agree on all of these things, would be to send to the Board of Selectmen for their comments, but, and then after that, we then hold a public hearing. So that's why I haven't, so back to marijuana.
Wait a minute, before we leave that, so we're, we're gonna adopt this?
No, that's the process.
Yeah, it's just the process. It, it's, it's a Mass. General Law, so it's, it's what's required. I just wanted to bring it to the Board's attention, because we did have comments on it, and I am new to Mass. General Law, so I just thought, I like to have lists, so I just love having the list, and the Board can review it, it's helpful.
Mr. Chair, do we have anything left to do on the Port Village District, too?
I don't think so.
It's on our agenda list, so that's why, I don't know if, I know we had talked about it, and we were going to make some annotations at the last meeting, I thought.
Well, okay, I'm confused, I thought we were on the agenda with the marijuana.
Yeah, we're on the agenda for marijuana right now.
Okay.
Right now.
Are we gonna come back to the Port Village after that?
Because we skipped over the Port Village, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's why I'm asking.
I don't know.
No, that's why I'm asking.
I'm really fucking with you on this tonight, okay. The Port Village District bylaw.
Okay, so we're back to the Port, so yes, there was just one change that I had under supplemental regulations, so it's on the first page.
I got it, I got it.
Okay. Yep, so it just basically took that language that said the Board may waive or modify dimensional requirements, if it is found that such waiver or modification will not substantially derogate from the purpose and intent of this bylaw. So that's what we had discussed at the last meeting that we wanted to keep in this because that wording is in the overlay district, so it gives the planning board kind of more leeway, yeah, flexibility to do things. So I, we thought that we wanted to keep that in, so I put that back in under supplemental regulations. And then I just added the permitted use for the single-family dwelling and then the accessory apartment for the special apartment like we had discussed at the last meeting. So it's just consistent with what we had discussed, but I wanted to bring it back to the board.
Okay, the only question I have is I thought we had discussed on the, the zoning map
Yes.
that we would stick to the area that was in purple.
Yes, so I have the zoning map in here, but I need to create a new one and I need help from the town surveyor to do that, but we just haven't gotten together. So yes, that is correct.
So that's still your intention.
Yes, it's going to be the exact same as what's the overlay district now, those bounds, so we're not changing anything.
So then, you know, then I think the situation is that you have then, with doing that change, you have adhered to all the comments we made
Correct, yeah.
when we last discussed that. So then, I guess the next step would be, and I don't know if we need a formal vote on this or just a consensus, but to sort of authorize you to begin this zoning amendment through the process which you have outlined for us.
Yes.
Uh, you know, in order to see, you know, where we can take it. And I guess the next step would be to submit it to the Board of Selectmen.
Correct, yep, that's the next step.
So do we need a motion and a vote on that?
I think, I think a, a motion and a vote to be formal if you want.
Well then, I would like to make a motion that we authorize you to proceed with the, you know, with, with the process for approval of the zoning ordinance for the Port Village District. You know, to eventually approach ten.
Right, yeah.
Board of Selectmen have to do, put it on a town meeting, Jonathan.
Yeah, that will, yes, they'll have to, but we have to have a public hearing first, so it'll be back in front of us. Again, it's just the process, you have to go to the Board of Selectmen and then it comes back.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Okay.
Now you can move on to marijuana.
Okay, I've been waiting. Go ahead, Ally.
So anxious.
Okay, so for the marijuana, two bylaws. I sent them to the outside council just for his review to make sure they're okay. And now they are, so I'm recommending that we, again, start this process and send it to the Board of Selectmen. So I just put it on just so that we would all be on the same page.
You said you sent them to outside council. Do you send them to Coleman and Page or do we have separate council?
We have separate council, but I sent these to Coleman and Page because they originally sent them to us through the Board of Selectmen. So I just was continued with that.
I knew we, I knew we had at one point adopted separate council for the planning board and I didn't know who we were using as we went along.
Yes, we still have outside council and I, in fact, I would like to send the Port Village District to the planning board's council for their review. And I would like to use our council, not Coleman's.
What, what happens at that point is a matter of interest. They bill us?
Yeah.
In other words, they'll review it and give you a set of recommendations and would it make sense for us to have them come here?
Um, I think if...
And talk about it?
I think if they're substantial recommendations, then I would have them come here.
Okay, I'll leave that to your judgment, fine.
Yeah, thank you.
So that, the same process is with the moratorium draft bylaw too?
Mm-hmm, yeah, that one's just easier because it was already drafted and it was kind of like a template. But I, for the, for the, what is it, the sale of recreational marijuana, we're going to try to ban it, obviously. And so I put it in a certain section of the code that has already specific uses that are banned. So I put it in there instead of using the draft that Coleman and Page gave us, so that's why I needed to send it back to them to get their okay, which they were fine with.
Reading today's paper that Yarmouth?
Rooster.
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 Re- rejected the ban.
It failed.
And the, and the moratorium.
At town meeting?
At town meeting.
Interesting.
Interesting, okay, so we're going to, we're going to do a motion for that too?
Yeah, so I'll move that we authorize Ally to proceed with the process to its approval of the zoning amendments regarding recreational, the ban on recreational marijuana and the continuation of the moratorium on recreational marijuana.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimously. Number D in all business is discussion of a local comprehensive plan subcommittee. The locals, I thought about that and I think the local comprehensive plan subcommittee, for a variety of reasons, will be two people, Mr. Atkinson and I. I don't think we need a motion for that.
That's what I'm saying, if you need a motion, we'll give you a motion.
No, we don't need a motion for that, so...
As long as I duck getting on.
They will, that, we'll set, we'll set a schedule up and we, we have to meet in the town hall, correct?
We have to meet in the town hall, our meetings have to be public meetings and I think, I think to the extent she's available, we would like Ally to attend all meetings that she's able to attend.
Good, we can do that.
So I think what we need to do Larry is probably have a, sort of a first meeting to discuss how we want to proceed sometime within the next two to three weeks.
Okay, I, I would think so, maybe right after Thanksgiving.
The week after Thanksgiving would be fine.
Good.
And, you know, basically what we have to do though is they have to be public meetings and they have to, we have to provide...
Go through the whole process.
You have to post it, forty-eight hours.
We have to do the posting and all that. So I think between the three of us, let's get together and find a date and time that works for all three of us.
Okay.
And then Ally, if you could proceed with the posting and finding a place for us to change here in town hall.
Yeah, we should, we could, yeah, we'll figure it out.
Okay, that would be that. Now, we're down to number three, briefings and reports by board members. Mr. McParland.
Couple of things, Mr. Chairman, I'm on the, on the capital outlay committee. I never quite understand if I'm there by virtue of this board or the, or the Board of Selectmen, but I'm there. I'm appointed. And out of interest to the board, we voted today pretty much all of our capital outlay requests, which they're in the area of twenty-odd million dollars for the next, big piece of it is the, is the
Waste water?
Waste water, thank you. The wastewater and, and coming up thirty-four, thirty-nine and, and going into Chatham and all of that.
And East Howard.
In East Howard, yeah. So we, we did most of that today. I, I have to, I can't go, go by that without saying to you that since we've had Chris, our whole operation at capital outlay, he just makes it easy. I mean, he's got it all laid out for us. He's got, he makes sure each of his department heads, if, if they, if they're looking for capital outlay projects, that they submit them to him, that they're submitted with backup and that they appear in person to present them, which was not the way it was always in, in capital outlay. So that's, that's worked pretty well. The other thing that I would report to you as a member of this board is I'm also on the East Howard Fire Station Building Committee. And because somebody might ask you, we originally looked at remodeling and adding on to the existing fire station in East Howard. Once we received money from the Board of Selectmen to hire an architectural firm and they started to sketch out for us what we could do with four million dollars, it became quickly and very clearly that it just didn't make sense to, 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 to add on over in East Howard. So we currently have a plan in for six million dollars, in case he wants to know the number. And effectively, it'll be a fire station that will face thirty-nine. You know, you all know where the one is now, over there, that faces one thirty-four.
One twenty-seven, yeah.
One, yeah. This one will face thirty-nine. And we had a, we were before the Board of Selectmen last night, they voted to recommend it and so we'll go to town meeting to try to get the money, obviously. It, it'll be bonded. But you don't need all the detail, but there's, there's a great need for, we currently basically have some of our equipment parked outside the fire station because we don't have enough room over there. And part of the, all of that is that the ambulance, when they opened the emergency room at the Fontaine, that has made the ambulance over there just unbelievably busy. I mean, they're, they're constantly going to Fontaine, picking somebody up out of the emergency room, taking them up to the hospital or various other things, but, so that, that's all part of why we need a full-time ambulance in East Howard. Plus, as this board knows, that's where our town, if it gets developed anymore, is going to be developed. That's where they're going to build, that's where there's open lots and so forth, so those are two other things I'm doing, sure.
Okay, Jim.
Yeah, Joe, I have a question for you. On the capital outlay committee, is the list of things that, that have been approved, is that going to be readily available?
Yes.
And let me tell you the reason I ask.
I have, I have, I'm sorry, I would have brought it with me.
Okay.
I have the folder in the car, I'll make sure I bring it the next time.
Okay.
We have it all laid out on a, on a, on a plan.
Okay, is it possible to get it before our next meeting?
Sure.
And I'll tell you the reason that I ask is I'm on the community preservation committee and...
Your committee is all over that.
Right, well, basically there are a number of applications, at least a few applications that I'm aware of, where the applicant has applied in both places.
All, all I can tell you from our perspective
Right.
is that on our plan, in fact, we walk out
Yeah, okay, if you have another card.
Over the car, I, I've got a duplicate, I'll, I'll give you the one I have and then you can see where they have, there's a source of funding and then there's, there's a long list of CPC proposed funding.
Okay, but the capital outlay committee cannot approve CPC funding.
Oh, I know that. Oh, no, 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 I'm, all we're saying, we have an obligation, we don't have an obligation, but we have a format whereby we spell out as part of it, and I'll show it to you.
Okay.
Where we think the money's going to come from.
Okay.
And, and, and there's a lot of CPC things on there.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Also, your former chairman was not appointed last night, you know.
Oh really, okay.
I don't know where that's all going, but it didn't happen last night.
Okay.
You had, again, Jim.
Okay, yeah, well now I'll, I'll give my briefing on the CPC committee. We have started meeting and we have started going over the applications. We are trying to do like between four, we have sixteen applications. We have, has had a meeting last Thursday to begin the process. We have three more meetings scheduled before the end of the year in which we hope to review and meet with the applicants on all sixteen applications. The next meeting will be November thirtieth, which is a Thursday night at six o'clock. Then we have meetings scheduled for December seventh and December fourteenth, which are both Thursday nights and the meetings are at six o'clock. We hope to review all applications and meet with all applicants prior to the end of this year and then we will schedule at least one, if not two, meetings in January in order to deliberate and make our decisions and vote.
How much money have you got?
That's a very good question, Joe. I can only give you what I think is the estimate because we did get a fairly detailed financial briefing, which I think I understood most of, but we're probably talking about someplace in the range of two point six to two point seven million dollars.
We're moving on to Mary.
Not much to report. Store commission will have, I think, the, another issue with the Brooks Park. I know there was talk that the Recreation Commission's going to come in before us for a certificate of appropriateness for about, signing a bathroom at Brooks Park, but that is really all it's... I think maybe it's a second in, over by the recreational area.
Over on the far side.
I think in the...
Over near where they put the picnic thing and stuff.
I believe that's where they're, they're looking.
Uh-huh.
I don't think it's on our agenda for this week, but it's, it sounds like it will be coming before us, but other than that, nothing that's really of interest, the usual.
Having said that, the, very quickly, Sacra Tucket Harbor, we had a request from Matt Hart and John Rendon for a brief presentation from the board and I said, tonight we have a busy, a busy agenda. So we, and we only heard about it yesterday.
Yeah.
So they didn't go on the agenda now.
Oh, they want to come before us?
They want to come to us to talk about a hundred-seat restaurant at Sacra Tucket Harbor. Apparently to be funded by whoever wants to build it, to expand the septic and whatever else is going on. So we asked, Ally asked them to bring a little bit, maybe a map or a story or whatever they're going to tell us
Information.
so we can have something concrete to look at and talk about because that site is getting pretty busy right now with Outer Cape and...
I can tell you what it is, so you can be thinking about it. They have been approached to have somebody lease
I know that.
the piece of land and then build the building for a restaurant there.
Yep.
Which I think would be great. I truly do. I, I think it'd be wonderful.
If they can, can work on their parking problem.
Oh, I agree. I, I agree with that also.
And, and then the difficulty is how we handle a thirty-year lease and how, how it's administered.
We being?
We being the town of Howard, not us. The town of Howard.
Board of Selectmen?
Mm-hmm.
I would think so, yes. And, you know, in, in, in all due honesty, we don't have a great record of being landlords. And, you know, this is, you know, a multi-million dollar project for somebody and, you know, restaurants tend to fail. What happens if they fail?
Well, you worked that, Ally.
Yeah, I know.
Have negotiated a few of those, not here in Howard, but other places. Yeah, that's, that's, but, but, but all that does is underline what you started out by saying, the significance of, of the agreement between the applicants and the town.
Correct. Having said that, is there, are there any other items before the board? You patiently waited, you want to say something?
Well, I thought you were going to talk a little bit more about the Port Village District information. I missed them last meeting, I didn't know you were going to discuss that, so I can talk with Ally a little bit off-record.
Can you tell us your name, sir?
Bob Nickerson. I live at thirty-seven Bayview Road and I am doing the project six seventeen Route twenty-eight, restoration of a Spur House seventeen ninety-six. I went for, well, Greg at the time, so I got ZBA approval and all that, so... And so I'm trying to find out how this overlay might affect me since I'm right there and so...
What's the address of the property that you're doing?
Six seventeen Route twenty-eight, I'm three houses away from Bayview Road.
Yeah.
Oh, kind of across, just down the street, just east of Embry's?
Correct.
Just to clarify, there is currently an overlay district there and what the planning board's proposing is to make basically the overlay district the underlying zoning, but we can go through, that's confusing, so we can go through it in much more detail.
Well, I watched last, my, my, last week's, last meeting, this, tonight, before I came to kind of get a feel for what was going on. And, you know, they had a lot of discussion and such and so not quite sure where the board's trying to go and then I didn't know where in the process public opinion got in. public opinion got involved, but it sounds like you're going to take your recommendations to selectmen, then it comes back, and then it goes for public opinion.
You are correct, yeah.
Okay, so...
So you'll have a chance to, it will be a public hearing, and you'll have a chance to speak at the hearing and voice your concerns or opinions at that time.
And, and, you know, quite frankly, you committed to talk to Ally, and she'll go through that. She'll be delighted.
I'm sure.
Joe, Mr. Chairman, I recognize the representative of the Board of Chamber of Commerce here this evening. She came out working after hours, so her bosses should know she was here till eleven o'clock at night.
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock. See, you moved that clock on me.
I didn't move it very well, did I? But there, there's no further business before the board?
Motion to the meeting be adjourned.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.